I swear to tell all truth. All truth, all we got. Jay Nello, 18 Landes Drive. My comments are about being disingenuous. When the pipeline was expanded, the pressure, Mr. Sanders, the testimony shows that it really wasn't openly discussed with the town, at least on the record. When Mr. Sanders was asked, "Well, why wouldn't it have been discussed?" He said something like, "Well, you wouldn't necessarily bring that up at that time." He also said something like, "But you can't couple the pipeline expansion from the regulator." So again, disingenuous. Earlier or in a prior, recent life, this thing, this regulator station was mostly for Homedale. Now the narrative has changed. It's for Homedale and the surrounding communities. We were told repeatedly with pictures and everything, these regulators, these inert regulators underground at the Vonage Station freeze up at times, and they do get some ice on them at times. And this can get much worse and much more dangerous when it's cold out. And I provided testimony, and many others in the room have observed, that we had a very cold winter last winter, and there was no New Jersey natural gas people anywhere near those things to check on them for days and days after. So again, I find that very disingenuous. Wouldn't you really want to see what's going on after those zero-degree days? There's no rush to do that. The testimony from the experts, you won't see anything, you won't smell anything, there's no impact on real estate. Virtually every word out of every mouth of every one of these experts was, "There's nothing, 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 there's nothing." Candidly, Ms. Skidmore, if I were you, I would have put some things in to come across more credible. I don't think you're coming across credible at all. We're told there's going to be extensive landscaping, and it actually does look like extensive landscaping. But any visit to any of the other New Jersey natural gas regulator stations shows some pretty less-than-extensive and poorly-maintained landscaping. I think that should be considered. Finally, we have a situation where the regulators at Vonage freeze up a little. Once in a while, something that needs to be managed. I would characterize that as a squeaky wheel. The company's solution for this squeaky wheel is literally to build the equivalent of an oil rig there, to pump oil for what is a squeaky wheel. They're going from inert regulators to this massive heater. I just think that's a disingenuous solution for the problem at hand. The final thing I'll say, it's the final, final, is the focus on the southern end of the system, which is where the line comes from Jamesburg, to me strongly suggests that the need for this equivalent of an oil rig for a squeaky wheel is to help provide flexibility to the system way down the line, heading toward Grumston and the shore. I think there's no genuine need in Homedale.
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask people to start lining up maybe one at a rate or two at a time, just so we can keep the flow going. So I'm not going to call on you, just young... Well, the gentleman here, the best, was sort of next, so I'm going to let him in.
Me?
Yes, you.
Okay.
And then after that, you can line up one or two. You don't all have to get together, but that way we keep the people moving. So three minutes.
Swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear.
Yes, I will. Okay, so it's Kareem Jani, Kareem Takalusa. I've just written it up, because it doesn't come across on the table. Okay, so dear Homedale zoning board members, the proposed three-chimney gas regulator station...
Is it in the line, Trudy?
Sorry. The proposed three-chimney gas regulator station is amongst the largest of its kind, is clearly an industrial installation, and per New Jersey Natural Gas's own testimony, typically belongs in an industrial zone. A beautiful scenic road populated by multimillion-dollar residential developments, farms, and corporate office campuses is simply the absolute worst location for such an installation. Equally important, the new increased-capacity, high-pressure main gas line was not built for Homedale's needs. New Jersey Natural Gas was deceitful in not disclosing its anti, that along with the new pipeline comes an industrial regulator station. New Jersey Natural Gas did not present alternative solutions, and New Jersey Natural Gas's experts' overconfidence statements were not backed by solid evidence and completeness. Board, please be very wary of Mission Creek with respect to zoning. Granting the 12 variances can very quickly snowball into a large-scale industrial site. New Jersey Natural Gas's real estate expert opined that a cell tower and a solar farm already in place, or with a cell tower and solar farm already in place, the addition of a natural gas regulator has negative impact. The slippery slope arguments already being made. The long-term solution for New Jersey Natural Gas self-imposed, self-imposed icing problem at the long-existing Vonage regulator should reside at the Vonage location. The solution should be a Homedale-size solution, not a New Jersey Natural Gas network increased-capacity optimizing solution. Homedale does not need the excess capacity, thank you very much. I strongly suggest that the board soundly reject this application. Following are my detailed observations. New Jersey Natural Gas did not increase the pipeline capacity for Homedale. In 2011, 2012, the old main gas line in Homedale was replaced. The diameter of the new pipe is 16 inches, whereas the old pipe was 10 inches. This is a 2.5 times larger pipe in area. People need to understand that, because they take 16 and 10. No, it's pi R squared, so the area is 2 and 1/2 times larger in pipe area, and therefore 2 and 1/2 times the previous volume. In other words, a 150% increase in capacity. The pressure in the pipe also significantly increased from below 250 PSI to a maximum of 722 PSI. Such an increase in gas delivery capacity could not possibly be driven by the needs of a mostly-developed Homedale and the goals of its master plan. Please note, Homedale is about 6,000 residences, so a 15% increase would involve 700 additional residences, which would easily absorb any reasonable increase in Homedale's housing stock, given the limited land available. Clearly, the pipeline capacity increase was not with Homedale in mind.
Okay, thank you.
No, not yet, sorry.
Yeah, I've given you three minutes and 42 seconds.
Okay, can I put this into the rec, because this is very, very important?
You can.
Can anyone else give me time?
How long do you have to read?
I have two more pages.
I'm not letting you read two more pages, so if you want one more minute, the rest of it...
Shall I read someone else's?
I'm quick.
Okay, please.
You want to read one else's?
Ridiculous.
I'll read the last page.
This is going to be with us for the rest of our lives. They have had chances to speak for hours on end.
That's how the process works.
No, you could make this longer. We have to live with this. This is going to have to happen today.
You've had your point, thank you.
No, thank you.
You swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear.
Yes, I do. Okay. Ken Wadyen Pisola, I live at 939, oh, a little short, 939 Homedale Road. I own the very sweet little business of the vineyard across the street. Oh gosh, I have so much to say, I have three minutes. So once again, I find myself...
Your attorney gonna also make a statement?
My attorney had a conflict tonight, so no, he is not.
Okay. I'm going to let you have a little extra time to...
In lieu of your attorney?
Because I was going to allow your attorney to make a statement at the end, so because...
Wasn't counting on the Thursday night, and...
So, go ahead.
Okay. So once again, after months of meetings, I feel that there is, thank you, that there is more unsaid than said. The proposal seems to be very vague with many unanswered questions. The gas industry is shrouded in secrecy, and so is this entire proposal. The answers that the various experts have given us seem to be vague and repetitive. Once again, I know we can't refer to the previous testimonial, though Ms. Skidmore, at the first time we came to a hearing, did. I cringe at some of the words that are used. This time, it's the repeated use of the word "commercial." It is not zoned commercial over there. There is no commercial zoning along that strip of Homedale Road. Oh my goodness. And talking about the sound, I had grave concerns about the sound and the emissions and the pollutants. And as far as noise, Homedale Road is a very quiet road. After about 7 o'clock at night, from 9 o'clock on, I can count the cars that go down there between 9 and 5:00 in the morning. We're used to hearing crickets, owls, quiet sounds at night. We're not used to hearing hissing and sounds that a regulator would make. I also took huge offense to Mr. O'Toole's deeming the land as minimal value. It is apparent he has no familiarity with farms or agriculture, and simply took the approach of a developer. Perhaps the land is not worth much to a developer, because it cannot be raped and destroyed, like so much of the other land in our town has. But any other farmer who is interested in purchasing the property, or a vintner who's interested in purchasing our vineyard, would be more than happy to spend millions upon millions of dollars, and I've been offered from several different vintners. So the homes in the area are also priced well, well into the millions of dollars. What makes those homes worth so much? Would they be worth so much if they had industrial buildings all around them? I don't think so. I think it's the preserved land around them and the farms around them that keep a bucolic look. We are also in a historic village. Homedale is a little historic village over there. It's very pastoral. There are office campuses, there's a lot of property around them. It is not an industrial site. Oh, I'm sorry, I get very nervous of public speaking, and I don't like it.
You got it.
We're with you.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Okay. So another big issue with me is, it is very laughable when the gas company says it has compromised. Are you kidding me? They forget their entire situation is self-created. They keep talking about the box, and it's dire, and it freezes. Well, when I bought my property, part of the fence was 100 years old, and I have a bunch of little rescue ponies. And one day, a couple of them pushed through the fence. Well, yoo-hoo, I had to spend the money and put in a new fence. I can't keep saying, "Oh dear, my fence is bad, and the little ponies are going to push their way out onto Homedale Road." It's the same as a box. So I'm really amused by the urgency of the corroding, leaking box with a valve that freezes in there, when it can be very simply and inexpensively fixed. I also asked the board when considering this, and I appreciate all the time and your very thoughtful questions that you are putting into everything, the residents around the area, the children around the area, the environment around the area, and the safety around the area. I have huge concerns of an explosion radius. It has not been answered, and it can happen. And yes, that is a valid runway across the street. I'm a farm across the street, but I also live across the street. My home is right there. And my home is not on preserved land. I have six acres that are not part of that preserved farm, and I do live there. And as far as, when you may mention that you sat out there at our very sweet little business, yes, there is a ghastly cell tower across the street. I'm very much aware of that. That happened before I was there. But that's not all it's about. I grow grapes. My grapes are already nine years in the ground. The worth of those grapes are already irreplaceable. Grapes have very, very thin skin, highly permeable. I don't know what's going into those grapes. I also enjoy sitting out in the front there. There is a tree that's over 200 years, actually, it's over 300 years old, on my property. And I sit under that tree and read, and so does my daughter. People coming to my house, to my vineyard, drive past that ugly thing day after day. So will you see it sitting in the back? No, but you'll see it approaching the place. And most of all, aside from ugly, aside from aesthetics, this is about an industrial use. We're going to allow an industrial item, an industrial use, in Homedale. There's still pieces of land right in that village, and I mean Homedale Village, there are still pieces of land that are available and open. There's the SS White Track. I don't know what's going on in the old Lawrence Farm. We've got Highway 34, and hey, I'd love to build a Wegmans or a Wawa right on my 31 acres on Highway 34. And I'm sure my brother-in-law would on his across the street. So realize what this opens up. Once it's allowed, what's going to be next? How are we going to tell other people no, if we concede to this? So, sorry, I'm kind of all over the place, but I wasn't really counting on this tonight. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear.
Zachary Gelsstein, 11, Chardonnay Drive, Homedale, New Jersey. I have a PhD in mathematics, statistics, and I'd like to make some comments on some of the testimony that was given. I heard a lot about the criteria that there's no detrimental effect. I would say of the criteria, of the testimony we heard, the one thing I'd say was actually convincing was when they said that this would only cost the township $5 a year. I think there was a clear economic analysis there that was valid. The other things, the handpicked, matched study of a handful of residences that indicated that there is no impact, I think that's a completely fallacious approach, the statistical study of such a question. And you could hardly draw a conclusion on that basis to say that there's no detrimental effect on residential prices. The other thing, I don't think that there was a clear argument that there was no impact of the pollutants that will be put into our air. We know that pollutants are low amounts, but as they accumulate, they do have an impact. And we used to see that in our rivers, until we got wise and started to clean things up. And that over time, even the small amounts released into the air will impact the air quality in the area, could kill off the vineyard across the street, will undermine the quality of the area where we have residences within just a few hundred or 500, whatever the number of feet is. So I don't think that was a convincing argument, that there's no detrimental impact. And certainly, the placement of an industrial facility in our town is a big detrimental impact to the nature of our town. I think those who drew up our zoning laws didn't intend for this kind of a facility to be put there. And I think that's a detrimental effect to our town. And for those reasons, I don't think that the zoning board should approve this.
Thank you.
Swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear. Yes, I do. As you know, again, I would adjure the board to be very wary of experts, especially corporate, corporately-sponsored experts. History is littered with experts that have claimed no cause, no fear, no reason to question, starting with the cigarette industry. There were experts saying it's not, still experts, that are saying it's not a medical problem. And the cigarette industry, when they can't get it past us, they go to other countries and tell them that. Where are these experts coming from? Three Mile Island. That was very well-regulated. There was, it was monitored, there was no chance of a failure. And you saw what happened there. So these things persist. So again, this is Homedale, this is our home. We have trouble addressing a house fire in the southern part of Homedale. With a 20 mile-an-hour wind, any emissions that come from this thing are coming from the west. Any emissions coming from this thing are village school in three minutes. So I ask you to think about these things carefully. There are a lot of holes in this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear.
I do. Terry McGovern, 9, Spring Valley Drive. I speak to you as a homeowner, to you homeowners, in that I'm opposed to this application at this time. My reason for being opposed is not for what I know, but rather for what I don't know. The question about the emissions is a critical one, not only for the rest of Homedale, but particularly for those of us who live close to ground zero. If you were to stand in my backyard, which faces north, you would be able to see, the trees weren't in the way, the area that we're talking about. I'm that close. We've lived in this house for 41 years, we've raised our children in the backyard. Currently, our grandchildren play in the backyard. I expect to live to 100, so I expect to see my great-grandchildren playing in that backyard. And I'm concerned when I don't know the risk that this proposal has to my children going forward. What we need is an expert to consider the consequences of air pollution coming from this situation. As President Reagan might have said, or would have said, "Respect, but verify." We need experts, an expert who is capable of seeing facts which are not being presented. So I speak to you as a homeowner, to homeowners, this is not ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Swear to tell all truth, tell all the truth, so we can hear.
Regina Crisio, C-R-I-S-D-I-O-N. I want to make a statement, but I have a letter from someone else who couldn't make it here tonight. Could I read that also?
Yes, three minutes.
I will talk fast. Just a few things I'm trying to pull together. The first is, we'll be talking about the toxic chemicals in the air that could possibly get into the water supply. I just want to emphasize, this is the watershed. This does supply water to 250,000 or more people in Monmouth County. So we really should be working to protect the watershed. That's number one. Number two is, I was struck by the D1 variance for the third principal use, as the planner had been. This is a third use. It's not a second use, they're adding a third use onto it, and that's something that we should really look at very carefully before we say yes. Also, the fact that 12 variances were needed is also something that I think is a little bit much. One or two I can see, but 12 seems like a bit much. Keep in mind, just because they say they need it, which we don't know for sure that they really need it, doesn't mean that you have to give it to them. I give an example of, oh, in 2011, when they put the line in, they forgot to mention to us, there was supposed to be documentation, I never saw it, that they forgot to mention that they needed the regulator station. And to me, that's a self-imposed hardship. They put in the line before they told us about the regulator station. But a parallel is something I thought of about 20 years ago when I moved into town. Bay Shore Sewerage Authority expanded their facility, because they were expecting sewers to be put in down here. And we opposed that, we kept the sewers out, and they somehow managed to survive without all that extra service that they were planning on bringing in. So keep that in mind. And the last thing I want to say about this is, they keep talking about it being inherently beneficial to the people in town. We are not making the comparison of no gas service versus gas service. We're talking about the gas service we have now versus their upgraded gas service. And I don't think they've proved that it was inherently beneficial. And the other thing, if I still have time, I'll still give it faster. A letter from Lilaia, L-I-L-A-I-A, De Filippis, D-E capital F-I-L-I-P-P-I-S, from 2 Beverly Drive. I'm writing to urge you to vote no on the proposed New Jersey natural gas, industrial gas regulator station at 960 Homedale Road, and not grant the variances required. I am very concerned about the emissions that will foul the air where my children go to school and impact the swimming river reservoir. I do not believe that New Jersey natural gas has proven an absolute need for this project. I do not wish to set a dangerous precedent for such an industrial use. Please help to preserve the quality of life, our water quality, and our property values. Protect our community from unnecessary risks associated with being the hub for a statewide natural gas distribution center. This property is not zoned for this industrial use, and variances for such a project should not be accrued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I make it? I gave you a little more time.
Barbara Stinger, 5, Deerfield Road, Homedale. We need to protect Homedale, we need to protect the people who work in the building there, we need to protect the residents there. It's a lot, whatever it's on court, that lot is in a residential neighborhood, so your testimony was not fair on that point. We need to protect the solar farm, that's Homedale, it's essential, Homedale. We need to protect our first responders. Our first responders will be first, not the New Jersey natural gas people coming from Wall. They'll be here second. So this is putting an onus on our towns, on our volunteers, who are not all from Homedale, and is that going to affect our ability to get more volunteers, now that they're not just dealing with typical fires, but this gas regulator issue? You've heard experts' hours, theirs, there's always the battle with the experts. I leave the technical stuff up to them. But with that, you have to judge the veracity of the people who have spoken here. And as we've seen tonight, despite the fact that they have professionals with a coordinated effort, we had slew of residents asking great questions that they couldn't even get answers from, from the experts. And that tells you something right there, about them just not being prepared to come in and deal with us as a community. I'm a lawyer, I get it's legal stuff and legal standards, but it's more than just that to a sound community. And I appreciate all these experts staying here to hear us out through the end of the night. I'm a little disappointed, because today, or tonight, when your expert was here, you could hear a pin drop in the room. We all listened, we were all paying attention, yet the entire time I'm online waiting to speak, this witness is rolling through Facebook. And that's so disrespectful. This is a legal hearing, and I would expect more than that from both sides, and we didn't get that from both sides tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just would like to point out that I'm actually, I live in a house that's going to be about 1,000 feet away from that proposed regulator station. And it just makes me very concerned that we have a professional engineer who's considered to be an expert, who works in a gas company, who does the operation and safety, who has some numbers that include the radius of the pipe that would be feeding the gas, as well as the PSI, and is still unable to calculate an explosion radius. It's amazing that, you know, just having that feeling of this station is approved, going to bed every night, knowing that if an explosion would happen, it will wipe out the entire family and entire development that we live in. I'm not sure why this has to be in the middle of all the houses. I mean, I moved into Homedale about a year and a half ago, and the reason I came in from New York was because we were looking for a wonderful school, you know, the beautiful, you know, area to live in, all the natural farms, this, this, this. And I was just surprised to know that there's a gigantic cell tower behind the house. Now there's another, you know, gas station regulator that's being proposed, so where is Homedale? I mean, why did we move to the town if this is, you know, what the town has to agree to? I plead with you to reject that application as a parent. I mean, as I said, I live 1,000 feet away. And I think the company needs to make a lot more sincere effort... And, um, and I think the company needs to make a lot more sincere effort in, you know, addressing the issues with the current regulator that's advantage. There hasn't been any documented attempt, but there was one, two, three, four attempts that has failed. Um, I think it's an easy way out. I appreciate all the testimonies that were provided tonight, but people, obviously, when they provide an expert testimony, um, you know, they, you know, as they said, that they're obligated to, to certain legal standards, but not really obligated to the concern of the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Maris Rizkala, I should be moving into the Hayfield Court, 21 Hayfield Court, and call this end.
All right, could you spell your name?
Sure, it's Emad, E-M-A-D, last name is Rizkala, R-I-Z-K-A-L-A. So I, I kind of second what Shuiv just said in terms of moving here, okay? I was very disappointed, to be honest with you, that this was going to be built right behind us where we're going to be moving in. You know, I have two little girls and I have a third on the way, and it's just, it's just scary that this thing, if this thing explodes or anything happens, and there's no guarantee. I mean, you know, it's unlikely to happen, sure, but hopefully it's unlikely to happen, but if it does happen, it wipes out the whole community. Uh, there's about 19 homes in this community right next to this, that this was going to be built. Each home has at least two to three young children, okay, so you could just do the math, how many kids are affected in terms of pollutants, in terms of, you know, the water, in terms of, you know, just, yeah, just being in a place where, you know, you could walk around in the roadway and kind of, you know, tree-lined streets. You know, I grew up, I grew up in New York as well, so I, you know, I wanted something else for my dad, for my kids. You know, I wanted the, the tree-lined streets and the, and the, you know, nice homes and the, you know, the nice, nice atmosphere. And it's like, I feel like, you know, why did I even come? You know what I mean? It's a little disappointing. The other thing you have to think about, if this, if the values go down of these homes, then the tax assessment goes down, goes down. And that's less money for our schools, things that we need to do in Hombdell, and that's another thing that we have to worry about. And I can tell you right now, this thing is being built, real, the real, the real estate market is going to know about it, and the, the real estate is going to go down. It doesn't matter what, what the experts are saying in terms of, you know, it's, it's hard to make an, make a statement in terms of real estate when you're not talking about the specific location, the specific, if this has, has ever happened in an area where it's all million dollar homes and plus. So again, I plead that this does not get approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said.
(inaudible)
I do. My name is William Kastning, last name spelled K-A-S-S-M-T-N-I-N-G. I'm going to be discussing my statement here from three perspectives. As a person of a resident, I live at 4 Taccalusa Drive. I'm also the executive director for Monmouth Conservation Foundation, which is one of, um, and one of 400 accredited land trusts in, in the United States. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, I am on your planning board, I'm on your environmental commission. I've sat on other municipalities zoning boards and planning boards and environmental commissions. I'm also, I came up here four, six years ago from a planning job in Maryland. I was a town planner down there. My organization, Monmouth Conservation Foundation, as I indicated, is a land trust. Our mission is to save open space, create parks, preserve farmland, protect wildlife, and safeguard water. In partnership with the town, the state, the county, and ourselves, we preserve Chase Track, which is what became the open space located around this site. So we're concerned. We're, uh, I'm concerned about the second variance on this site and third use. I believe there was a variance granted next door also for the solar panels, if I'm not mistaken.
Not in the last four years.
Okay, but, okay, maybe not. But, um, you, you may be putting yourself in a bind, whereas at the end of the year, when you create your report for the town council, that you are maybe, if, if this is passed tonight, you may be recommending changes to the master plan and the regulations, so I caution you on that. Obviously, I'm opposed to the D variance, the three set variances, the minimum lot size variance, and the intensification of this, as well as the D variance. Therefore, both Monmouth Conservation Foundation and I ask that you reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
My name is Delima Stein. I live on 5 Cindy Lane, Hombdell, New Jersey. Uh, my husband and I, we are also supposed to close on one of the houses at Hayfield Court in Hombdell Fields at the end of this year. Um, so understandably, considering that we will be living so close to where this new facility is supposed to be built, we are incredibly concerned. Uh, we have five children on top of that, so it wouldn't just be affecting us, it would be affecting our five children. Um, there's a couple of major issues here. Uh, the first being in relation to the questions that I asked earlier, they asked for refused answer. Uh, they acted as though it was a ludicrous question, right? What I asked was a ludicrous question, except that, with, with the exception that hundreds of people have died from such explosions over the past several years. So it's actually not a ludicrous question. And the disingenuousness of one of their experts today saying, well, it's in an industrial area, well, except that it's not. It's on an industrial property, not an industrial area. So those are two very different things. And they're playing with words, trying to, you know, tap dance around it, and they're being disingenuous in that. And the problem is, is today you have soft targets. Unfortunately, we do have all these horrible things and attacks and kids coming to school with guns and bombs and all these things. I know it's a horrible reality and it may sound, you know, uh, you know, cataclysmic and like I'm talking about a movie, but it's not. That is our reality today. And things like that happen. And if things like that unfortunately are part of our daily life, we need to think about the consequences of how it would affect the immediate surrounding community if something like that did happen and does happen. It's not like, oh, it happened once, it happened twice, only five people have died. Hundreds have died from these things. Hundreds. So that's something serious to consider. You have, what, in half a mile, over 20-something, 30-something homes, all with small families, dozens and dozens of children? And let's not forget the fact of how disingenuous they were today when they were sitting there saying, oh, well, you already have a building on it, so it's already being used for industrial use. Except that a building doesn't put out pollutants. You know, if a building blows up, it doesn't have a blast radius. So to sit there and say, well, you know, it's kind of the same thing, well, except that it's not. So, you know, again, more disingenuousness from them. And to sit there and say, well, you know, I had a nice glass of wine in the parking lot and it really wasn't that bad of a view. Well, except that the grapes from that vineyard extend all the way down Hombdell Road. So maybe from the parking lot, you couldn't really see it, but the pollutants will go on the grapes that are further down Hombdell Road. So again, they keep trying to pass it off like, oh, it's not going to be a deal. Really? Would any of you buy the wine from that vineyard anymore? I wouldn't. I'm not taking a chance on something that has particles going all over and going into the soil year after year after year. Who's going to do that? It destroys the business and also it is an asset to the community that vineyard. It adds to the flavor of it, the farms, that's what, I come from Queens, I moved here from Queens, my husband moved here from Long Island. We moved here away from that industrial life. And now you're bringing it in if you approve this. You're basically destroying the very flavor of this community and putting the children here and the residents at danger. And to sit there and say, well, you know, there's no effect, no, there is. It's cumulative effect over time. And sit there, it's not by EPA standards, both standards change all the time, so maybe it's not by EPA standards today. What about when they do better tests and more exact tests 10 years down the road and they find, well, you know, my bad, there were actually some impacts to the residents? I am, I have to say offended by the disingenuousness of the gas company and how they act as though we're all too stupid to realize what the truth of the situation is. I am begging you guys, for the good of your community, for the children, for home values, for maintaining the standards of our community, the life we all moved here for, please do not approve this. I am begging you guys. Thank you.
(applause)
Thanks for staying out.
I do. Taylor McArland, 180 Dwight Road.